All right, it's a couple of minutes after seven. Mr. Piper still hasn't arrived, but we'll go ahead and start our meeting on time. We're at least a few minutes late. The first thing on our agenda is Mayor's comments, and I want to keep it short and sweet tonight. The good news I have for everyone is that the City of Buffalo has been approved for the Transportation Enhancement Program. That's that $300,000 grant we applied for through MoDi. We have been selected for that, which is good and encouraging news. We put in an application, Mr. Coulter into Great River did the grant writing for us, and that was for the proposed Green Space Trail. We'll need to start putting out requests for qualifications to hire consultants for the design, but I figure our next meeting will need to vote to approve $375,000 for the project from our transportation fund. Debbie, how much do we have in the transportation fund as of right now?
Um, I have the cash balance. As of December 31st, 2012, it's $483,773.
And it's my understanding though, it may be a year and a half before we break ground on that project. Is that right, Mr. Coulter?
Probably about a year, depending on the review of the system.
Okay.
Do we have to do the entire job before we get reimbursed?
No. You'll submit reimbursement monthly or biweekly to MoDi, but don't reimburse monthly.
I just wanted to announce that we were approved for that, and to let everyone know. And that's all I have for Mayor's comments. Next on our agenda is modifications. Two there to do. And I have one modification. The winter-spring 2013 sidewalk proposal, I'll have you hand out. It has a little bit more accurate, more updated numbers. That's all I have. Does anyone else have any other modifications?
I have one. Professor Katz is not going to be able to make it tonight. He called earlier, and he has the flu, so he's going to try to make it to our next meeting.
Okay. Table that for our next meeting. Anything further? All right. Citizen comments? I'll open it up for citizen comments. Do you have any comments for our citizens? I see that. All right, minutes and bills.
I think I had one question on the minutes, Debbie. It wasn't really a question, it's just a word that didn't quite... It says Christie stated she didn't think any of the capital improvement money needed to be used in areas that didn't include transportation purposes. I think that's supposed to say that I didn't want any of the... I thought that any of the capital improvement money shouldn't be used for transportation purposes. I don't know if I was reading that wrong, or I just... That was all I seen. And I'll make a motion that we approve minutes and bills.
I'll stick with it. All right, I'll call for a roll of the...
Christie? Hi. James?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Jess?
Ben.
Larry?
Hi.
Minutes bills have been approved. It's many reports, Becky.
We have not had a meeting yet in January. It's scheduled for tonight.
All right. Department heads to the presentation. Debbie, do you have anything?
Any questions? I kind of... I was a little irritated at the last meeting with the auditor, and so I just clarified for you all that the interest rate of the payment on bonds is 2.13 percent. And actually went back through the audit report and showed you what those figures were. And I didn't discuss it with auditor that was here, but I did discuss it with auditor that was on side through the whole hall. And she confirmed that the 2.13 is correct for the insurance fee of payment, so...
So you've audited our auditor?
Well, the guy that was here was actually a partner, and he doesn't normally do deliveries. And he wasn't actually here, but for about two hours when they did our audit, I mean, a half days that he was here. And so I'm guessing he just looked through and came up with that recommendation, but it kind of irritated me because about a year ago, Andrew asked me the same question, and I went and calculated the rate then. And so I just re-did it, but wanted to point out that that's quite a bit cheaper than what he stated that night.
Okay.
How much is your sales tax? How's it?
It's still pretty stagnant. I mean, the same as it has been. If we look at it in a quarter period, and it's holding its own, we're not going to be under budget this time.
Any other questions, Debbie?
What are we paying per mile? Is it like 50 cents, 52 cents a mile?
I'm looking at market, it's 50.5.
It looks like it's very similar to the IRS.
It is, yes. That's right.
Are we required to pay that?
No. I mean, you guys could set the rate of whatever you wanted. That's just what we've been paying.
I think we probably need a little bit.
Who do we pay?
We pay cheap. We pay... Anyone who goes to training. We pay Martha to go to Springfield, but I've got my head. And Paul wasn't making that.
And Lynn went and took our unit, take our vehicle?
They did, yeah.
They did.
Yeah, when Lynn goes to Springfield for a weekly trip.
Like, I've had to rent a Springfield before when we had issues to rent the same place.
I understand. You can take a vehicle. We don't pay mileage on a vehicle?
No, no.
No, no.
But my point was there have been times when Lynn couldn't help her. When she makes her weekly trip in a city vehicle, she has administrative things to run for the city, but she hasn't done.
Do you have a proposed rate? Because we didn't even get that from you all. What do you want to pay?
Well, the IRS rate takes into consideration things like insurance. They're going to be there no matter what. And, I mean, I think I'll ride my vehicle all you want for 30 cents a mile.
25 cents might be fair, but...
That'd make a good deal.
No, I mean, I don't know why the rest of the council people... Apparently, we voted on that at some point.
It's been a long time ago.
A long time ago. I mean, I want to be fair about it, but I think 25, 30 cents a mile is plenty. Larry?
I agree with him.
Do we need to... Can we vote on that for a report? I'll make a motion, but do we need to go now, under due diligence?
And I'll second your motion.
It says it was on the agenda. Do we need to put it on the next agenda to vote on? Or can we vote on it?
That's up to you. I look at your attorney, don't look at me.
Why don't we put it on the next agenda?
I don't know if we even need to vote.
I don't hear.
Well...
It's administration decision, it's not our... I mean, it can be ours, but it can also be administration.
I mean, I haven't looked at it, but...
Debbie's got to get some guidance from somewhere. Seventeen...
She gets more guidance than the rest of them.
Put it on the agenda.
Lynn is not here. Her report is in the agenda. Any questions regarding that? Building Inspector, sir?
I don't really have much to add to the report to begin over again. I can compare the last four years together. This year, we had 60. Last year, we had 70. And the year before, we had 47. So we're running about 50, 50, 60 coming up.
How are the new builds, Debbie?
We got... CMH just put a big revision on their building. And so the bank just figured, mentioned up there, that it would be another couple of weeks until they finished over there. And then reversing home over there, the parade road effort, that we've done the whole way. So those are the three biggest projects we're going to be running.
All right.
Did the opt-out provision expire in December for this job?
Yes, it expired 30th.
Can we put that back on the agenda for the next meeting?
It needs to be put back in effect.
Do what?
It needs to be put back into effect.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah. It needs to be opt-out. It needs to be put back in. No more construction on the others. We use Henderson, so why don't we put that on for next meeting?
All right. Any other questions for our Building Inspector? Fire Department?
I've got nothing to add. Is there any question?
Any questions, Chief Hagan?
Radiator panel, which truck was that you had radiator problems with?
I didn't. It was the gauge cluster. It was the gauge cluster.
Oh, it's water. What about my warning device, tornado sensor?
Not fixed yet.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I want the damage fixed. I don't need any excuses. If he can't... If the chief... If these people that he's talking to can't fix it, go someplace else. They can't be the only people with a tornado warning device to protect the people in the south end of town.
Do you have a proposal?
Yeah, get it fixed. Well, I mean, what I'm asking Eric is to go someplace, Eric, and tell those people they can't get it, come to the weekend, in two weeks with another proposal.
And you realize this is something, if we go outside of what our insurance coverage allows, then the city's going to be paying for that, and it's not within my spending constraints.
What I'm saying is, are they going to repair it within our budget?
Well, it's covered by insurance.
Yes, it has to be built.
It's covered by an insurance policy that has agreed to pay something, right?
Right.
Then let us go back to the insurance company and say, hey, we can't get these people to fix it. This is going to be the new cost.
But it's not a matter of Jimmy Joe down the corner has the part, he'd be willing to come over for four grand and come and fix it. If the part's being manufactured in Beijing, and that's the route that the insurance company is going to pay to get it fixed, then that's not going to work with time constraints, then we need to order a whole new system from somewhere else.
This isn't something you just walk into Walmart and pick up. It has to be manufactured for that pole. It's got to be built. They don't just... Not everybody is on a market for one. You just can't go pick one up and stick it on the pole and hope that it works.
Before our next meeting, will you find some prices of what it's going to cost to have someone come in and replace that ASAP?
Yeah.
And present it back to the board?
I'll give you that.
Any other questions? Parks and Recreation, Mr. Eric?
If we really have dodgeball starting getting large, I'll put four of us out later this month, maybe February.
I can make a pitch, you have it. You normally have the dodgeball.
The dodgeball, before we went into, you know, the reading the way, it's around 40, 45, this first time back, I think I had 30 going, 30 shots, something like that. You know, some kids come up after me, tried to, and didn't realize it was... We'd started doing it again, so...
So one night a week?
Yes, two, two or three nights. But it was the sport that was growing, you know, it was...
Any other questions, Mr. Eric? All right, Police Department, Chief Hartzell is not here tonight. He's going to report. Are there any questions about that report?
What about you? Is he coming back to work, as you say? What's his situation?
It's fine to say the name, I'll say it.
Who's on the floor?
I guess I...
It's not going nothing.
No, nothing. Street Water, sir?
Haven't got anything except what's on my report, but always, I've been off four or five days, but always, I think that's a good job. Always know I ain't had no complaints, and everything I think went well. I don't think the boy you had about 30 nights, or I figured you might have a little trouble with the...
Freeze.
Everything I think worked out, they just haven't called or anything, you know, so I think everything's good.
Which truck did you have the radiator?
We had... Well, we put one in the new truck, the tow truck. We got it, and then whenever we got the water truck, when we got the dock. But we did have trouble with them radios in other trucks, and we've got to look for it. And probably we need to get one for that truck of mine, because I don't know. I don't know. Them radios seem like they've been there last three or four or five years, and then they... They don't... They ain't real long-term items, they buy. I know the girls, we had trouble with... Well, the one there in the shop, they had trouble with it all the time.
There's a radio in there?
Well, I really don't know that much about it. Mary could probably tell you more about the radio than I can. I mean, I'm not good at that kind of stuff.
Like, the last one you got that I had in the program?
Yeah. I mean, they're just...
Chief, if radio we can get?
You know, I buy the control, I get it. Four or five years ago, buying another one anyway, so I just get...
I was talking about radio.
Radio.
It was one of the...
Oh, yeah, well, okay, that was really episode 10. The Dodge, the Chevy truck that we got for Doc, that pulley that puts the tilter on the belt came apart, and it went through the radiator, broke the belt. It was just one of them deals that nobody can... We just serviced it to where it happened, you know? We never... I mean, we just wanted to be, just to help. I talked to Mary, we took it to Rick Cummings, and he got a new fan for us, got a new radiator a little bit, and he saved us all the money we could. It should have been a lot more, you know? Other than that, I think that's only episode 10, yeah, that was Dallas. Wouldn't expect it, that... I think that they earned some dollars. And then I don't think I had anything else to happen, and I knew it.
Any other questions, Mr. Jasper? Tax collection report. Any questions regarding tax collection? Police want a treatment plan, sir?
I don't have a lot to report for once. We... Everything's been going. We've had a little bit of trouble with list station number one, and we've had to work through it. But we've got it up and running, and we've got number two up and running. We had a pump go out on it, but besides that, everything else is going pretty well right now.
When do you plan to put the big pump back online for the water well? Number one pump down? Is that what's the line? What is that, what's my...
Number three?
Number three. When are you going to put it back online?
We're going to... Debbie just gave me a memo here that we've got a holiday coming up on Monday, so we're going to try to get it put back online. The problem we've got is there's other power that runs through that too, besides just us. There's a bank on it, and there's also PIP runs their power through there. So when we shut them off, we shut... When we shut ours off, we shut them off.
Okay, so it's a fire situation, not a water shut-off situation?
Right. Yeah, it burnt out a leg on the preface.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? I will comment. Gus and I have talked about, pardon me, what our engineer is wanting from the city in regards to fixing our INI issues. They've completed the camera work that was budgeted for and approved, is that correct?
That's right.
And I guess now there's the notion that they're wanting to maybe do a little more camera work, if not a lot of camera work, to really get in there and figure out where our money's best spent, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And you and the engineer are going to have a proposal for our next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah. I've met with them twice. I just got off the phone with them right before we came to the meeting. They have the preliminary done, but they want to go ahead and, with the board's permission, on the 28th, they're going to bring you a proposal with what has been done and what the cost involved with that is. And then there'll be like two or three different ways that we can go. But they want to put it in black and white, so you can look at it and see exactly, you know, what the different options are. Last time I talked to them, they were wanting to do more camera work to bring everything up to the amount of money that we have available. But we need to bring it to you guys, where you look at it, see what you think, and then you can decide on the 28th which way you want to go. We... He also told me tonight that they've already got a proposal ready to give to EPA and DNR to show what we're doing and which way we're going. So they're up to snuff, and all it takes is just for you guys to decide what you want to do.
Do we have many lines going ahead to be repaired?
Right now, from what I have seen, the technology has changed. It used to be that you had to sleeve an entire line when you found something wrong. Now they can do it just in places. Like, if you have a broken piece of tile, you can go in and just do that piece of tile, and that's it. So we're covering a lot of ground with a lot less money. So it's working out pretty well.
Is it my understanding that, I guess, the more they camera'd, the more severe the problems they found?
Yeah. We went... The first section we went through was bad. The second section we went through didn't hardly have any trouble. The third section that we're just into now is really bad.
Okay.
So... And that's what they want to do, is get a whole picture and then go in and fix what is necessary to fix at that point, get the really bad stuff right off the bat. But when the engineer comes on the 28th, he'll show you what we're thinking. You can look at it and see which way you want to go with the costs that's involved.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right. Water adjustments.
I'll make a motion, we approve the water adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a roll of the...
Wayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Jess?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Christie? Hi.
Motion passes. New business license.
I don't think we have any. We're just trying not to take it off the agenda, because it's something new, and we're afraid we'll forget it if we take it off.
All right. Moving on to old business, the first thing on our section was mayor compensation. This afternoon, I filed a seek for election as mayor, so I'm going to recuse myself, grab a cup of coffee, and I will put our mayor pro temp, Mr. Stafford, in charge of running up the section meeting. Well, I'm up. Does anyone want coffee?
Since I'm in charge, then I want to hit peach the mayor.
Don't ask that question. Cut night for me.
Nightfall in a second. I believe this mayor's compensation was Mr. Rishel's proposal to put it on the agenda. Speak, Mr. Rishel.
Well, as I understand it, the mayor now makes $3,600. Great, may I have you if I miss?
Three fifty a month?
Three.
Three? Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred, and originally, the mayor was $20,000 something. Had pretty close before they reduced it.
Sixteen.
I was thinking it was like sixteen, seventeen, yeah.
Wasn't he a full-time mayor then? He's 20 hours a week, I'm gonna... I do 20 hours a week.
You might want to get your city attorney involved in this conversation. I don't think you can dictate the number of hours. This is what we've been told previously, is you can't really dictate the number of hours your mayor can work. You've been suggested. Would that be a safe thing to say, Travis?
I think it would be. I mean, if you have a salary... I mean, if their salary, and they fit within one of the, you know, exempt categories, then you can't say, you have to work X number of hours, but they better do the work that they do. I mean, it's a little bit different with an appointed or elected official in this situation. So, I mean, whether you can make them work full-time or not, I think is somewhat debatable. But I can look at that. I hadn't been asked to look at that, but I can certainly, if that's an issue that you all are interested in.
I think no matter what you do, you're going to have mayors that really work hard at it, and you're going to have mayors that skate. And I don't know that that should really be a factor. I just personally think that $3,600 a year is... If the mayor is doing the job, he's insufficient. Now, if he's not doing the job, then the voters will take care of you, I would assume, after the first election, but I... I'm not necessarily suggesting that we go back up to the original, although I personally feel like if you're doing a lot of work... I sit down there and I see an awful lot of city employees that run back to Andrew's office, and I know he spends a lot of time with the mayor's job. And I think for the certainty of what he does, $3,600 a year is insufficient. Now, this... Any salary increase, I'm sure, I know everybody on the board, I'm sure everybody's, I'm sure realizing that any salary reset will not take effect until after the election. But, I mean, I... My feeling is it ought to go to at least $14,000 or... How the rest of the board feels about it.
Is that a motion?
No. No, I'd like to... Before I make a motion, I'd like to wind up, better how everybody's doing.
I have a question. For it to be taken effect for the next mayor's election, does it have to be voted on before that election?
It should be.
Okay, so just before they... So this is something we have time to discuss, and maybe we can work with the budget and find the money in the budget, because right now, we don't have the money in the budget set aside to do that. And I would like us to maybe work, work on that and see if we...
Mr. Rishel has a good point.
Do that before we decide. I mean, if we have time.
Jill? I know what you're saying. Larry?
If we had the money, I'm afraid we're giving it. Heck, we have the money. The budget could be the value of money.
Again, you have mayor pro temp, I can... Good enough then. Yeah, right?
Probably appropriate.
Probably appropriate, not to say what I think, so... I mean, rock and hard place, but, no. You... Is it the consensus of the council that we hold this off for two weeks until the next council meeting and look at the budget?
I would suggest we hold it off until March, when we revise the budget and try to work in there if there's money to be found, if we can get some things and put it in the budget. That would be my suggestion.
The way I understand it right now is I see two that is against it, and two that is for it if the money's in the budget. Is that what you're thinking, Wayne, about it? Or you're saying yes regardless?
There's six votes.
You're going for it. You're trying to go for it.
But, I mean, that's just not fair.
I don't know if this is true, but I've heard of it, the mayor of Springfield needs $200. I had that time in research.
He does.
We meet once a week.
We meet once a week.
And he has two hundred and fifty staff members.
And he has two hundred and fifty staff members. But he still meets every week. You know, like we talk, that's a lot of time.
Well, their council meetings are bi-weekly, but they have a lunch meeting on the alternate.
What would you, since this is your, what would you propose? Do you want to put it at two a vote, or do you want to table it for two weeks?
I'd go to table it for two weeks.
Okay. What do you think about two weeks?
Well, Jim's not here, it's my main reason.
We will, we will so table this until the first regular meeting in March?
No, I'm guilty.
Well, Chris, well, let me, our February answer, as soon as the regular meeting, that should give us time to see what we're trying to do with the budget, that'll give us an idea.
I think we're gonna try to talk tonight and schedule the next budget meeting.
So you want, can you, can you prepare in March, in February, with an idea to get the council?
Try.
Then we can table it again. It's not, I don't know.
I mean, it's just before eight.
Larry?
I agree with him.
Kim?
I agree.
So says, we'll table it and bring it back up. Keep your job very effective. I've had three, I've had three seconds on the motion to impeach you.
Yes, you definitely don't like that one, it's not so far.
You wouldn't like it. I don't think you want that kind of vibe.
All right, Y M C A pool proposal. I'll defer to his app.
Is what we have before us in our packet, the budget, I mean, the proposal that we accepted and put it on the board?
The base card carry, yes, but we're looking for the contract language and to make sure that the contract is, is appropriate for us.
Let me ask you this, of course, I think most of us accepted it for Wayne. In theory, this is what we wanted, was to turn the pool over, and details of contract terminology should be left to our attorney and to the mayor, am I right? I mean, I'm not gonna try to interpret exactly how the contract should be.
The board has to approve unless the board just wants to vote, I guess, to give the authority to enter into whatever our city.
Well, I think it's something that we.
I think we already agreed that this is what we wanted, and the contract is good, so, I mean, you're happy with it, Travis, right?
Yeah, I think the appropriate thing to do is for the council, if someone, if you are okay, then authorize the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city. There are a couple of things, though, that I'd like to point out. Number one, this agreement that's in the board packet is not the final version, so I don't want anybody to have the impression that it were. I know that Dominic sent Debbie some changes from their attorney this morning, which I reviewed and okay, but it is not represented in here. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, and I haven't spoken to Dominic about this, but my understanding was that the Y is going to be responsible for day-to-day onsite picking up trash, that sort of thing. Is that your understanding, Dominic?
That's correct.
And is that the board's understanding?
Yeah.
And so, I think we may need to have a little bit of a conversation just about what routine maintenance is. You saw that in the email this morning.
I did.
And so, that may be something we need to talk about, maybe it's not, but that was the only kind of outstanding issue that I saw.
I know our lawyer's intent is just to cover, if the liner is, rips off of the pool, if something like, that's the intent of our lawyer, so I think if we can find a language that works for you, we'll make this work. Our intent is to spray the decks down, to keep the bathrooms clean, to pick up trash.
Sweet, ma, sure.
The operation of the pool will be the majority responsibility.
Perfect. And that was my understanding as well.
So I can so make that motion that you suggested?
Yes.
That we can give the mayor permission to enter into this contract when the language is satisfactory?
Yeah, I guess, not to be a technical picker, I guess I would have the motion be that you'd authorize the mayor to execute this agreement on behalf of the, or substantially in the form of this agreement on behalf of the city. That would be the motion.
And I don't have to repeat that, right? Okay. I so make that motion.
Is there a second? Offer a roll of the book.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, discussion, I apologize.
It, to me, it's ambiguous when under five, you say that under the city's responsibility, electric and water utility charges associated with operating of the pool site. Now, there's no definition of what pool site is, but if you look over here under the Y M C A agrees to provide necessary staffing, et cetera, and if you look down at H, it says electric utility charges for concession stand and pump room. Now, I assume, unless they're talking about a light bulb in the pump room, that the pump room is going to be on the pool site.
I'm sorry, I lost you mid, mid sentence there.
Okay, if you look, if you look at two under services, and, and look at H.
In H, I got you.
And then compare that to number five, that is the city's responsibility, under D. To me, that's ambiguous as all the get-out.
I agree. Which way should it be?
Well, I mean, I, what are the, what, I mean, the pump is a huge bill, I assume, and of course, you know, I'm still bothered a little. I think. I mean, I, I'm, I'm still bothered by the, the, and I understand it's an incentive to Y M C A members, but it's still a city pool. And I'm still bothered, I'm willing to accept it, but I'm bothered by a no charge for Y M C A members and a charge for citizens whose taxes own the pool. But to me, if you're going to accept all this, they should be responsible, responsible for all the electricity involved in the pool. And that's just the way I feel about it. Now, I'd want to, again, I don't have a big picture because I'm not looking at the figures for last year on exactly what electricity was, so I'm kind of shooting in the dark. But unless that's unreasonable, and Dominic's here, I mean, and Debbie's here, she may know, but I would think that would be a huge expense. And at the very least, we need to know.
Is this saying that we have more than one electric meter there either?
I don't know.
Because, just for clarification purposes, we only have one meter for the pump, for the pool altogether.
Yeah.
It's all one.
Well, in pool site, to me, would.
I mean, but I mean, the pump, the pool, concessions, it's all one meter, so.
But to me, the pool site, absent a definition, would include the wellhouse.
Actually, there is a definition, Wayne.
There is?
It's in the second paragraph.
Verse.
At the beginning of the agreement.
Oh, okay, let me look at it. Well, I don't think it's in mine. Oh, here we go. Twenty-five degrees, yeah, the pool site. So, that, then, is there not a, a direct contradiction?
Yeah, it seems to be ambiguous with who's gonna favor electricity. That's probably something that we need to get worked out.
Well, what did we agree to originally? I mean, that was part of it?
The, the reason, ambiguity, and I'm not trying to dodge this bullet, but I agree, there is some ambiguity, but that was how the proposal was written. Whenever I looked at the proposal and worked with the draft that they sent to me, and so, I guess the way I would read this is, Y is gonna be responsible for concession stand and pump room, and city's gonna be responsible for whatever else there is. That was my understanding upon reading the proposal, but I could be wrong, because I wasn't involved in those discussions.
Other questions?
One meter, you know, you've got problems.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, am I correct, they're gonna take the fence out in between the two pools? What have gone about the taxpayers that take their little kids down there, that pool? There's no fence to keep them out of the big pool.
I think they have a lifeguard.
May, may I answer? I'd like to. A couple things, with the pool, to have the fence in there and not have a lifeguard that directly supervises that pool's a youth liability, I think most, the insurance companies would, would say, hey, you need, either if you're gonna have a separate fence and pool there, you need to have a lifeguard for that area. So what we've done by removing that pool and allows our lifeguards to respond to the facility as one unit instead of two, so basically, we're keeping operations the same as what you've safely run for many, many years, except for allowing the lifeguard to see more efficiently react to situation if needed. As far as electricity, the intent was to, and there's obviously an issue here, but the intent was that the city would take care of that electricity. We felt like when we did the proposal that we shot the best number we could to the city, and with that electric being the really variable there that it's kind of hard to tell, we tried to keep direct costs to us, the lifeguards and the chemicals and all that stuff, we wanted to take that stuff. If that's something that, that you're not happy with, or we messed up on, then I'm certainly willing to work with the city however I can to get this addressed, to get a proposal adjusted to you, but the intent was that the city would take care of the electricity.
And that, that was in the first proposal that we agreed to?
Agreement, yeah, the, the kind of memorandum, memorandum of the.
All of the numbers, it was agreed that the city was paying the electric. So, I mean, I don't have it with me, so usually I have it with me.
Chuck, Travis is right, if it's not in the contract, it's not, it's very, it's we goofed, and that's a Y M C A thing, a Y M C A goof, but I think somewhere along the lines, we might have our eyes and mustn't tease with that.
Well, we just don't want to lose more with the fifty-two-hundred figure in the electric and everything else that we were losing before you.
Debbie, do you remember, do you have a copy of that, what we approved at the last time? It was my understanding that we were actually going to save a little bit.
Perhaps the better thing would be to table this. We've got a couple more, final, we can track it back here for consideration. Well, I mean, it would be nice based upon last year's figures. Now, there are things that friends have made, made you know, that you can't anticipate, but it would be nice to see the figures on the total electric from last year. We don't see exactly where, what we lost last year laid out and see what we would anticipate through the projection of the numbers, because it's very hard to make it this season if you don't have the figures.
I think we already did that when we agreed to this proposal. We, it was in the proposal that we had that the city was gonna pay utilities.
We didn't, we didn't do that, of course. We did not do that. There were no figures, only electricity to compare, and that until the board votes, you know, there, there's nothing there. You know, I, I want to see the figures.
Is that, Roger, does that, how many meters is there, if they want?
I would have to watch.
Does anybody have any idea?
For the pool, there's only one.
I must have plugged up the lights in the park, is it all for that meter?
No, it has, each pavilion has a.
There's probably six.
Yeah, six, seven.
The pump pool has its own meter?
Yeah.
The, the pool, all, everything with the pool runs on one meter? The pump, the concession, the building, all of it, the pool has one meter? Do they run off?
The, the, uh, two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven utilities, and I don't know how you break that down, water, electricity, and maybe phone, I don't know, that was forty-six-hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. I think we have one from this past year, but that was two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, just a year period.
Another issue that you all probably need to discuss, and I wish I had brought that up to the board, but as I understood it, and maybe Dominic can speak to this, I think the proposal had talked about a Sunday family swim, two, two days a month, and I don't know if that was inadvertent omission or if there had been some later changes, but y'all might want to look at the schedule in paragraph eleven, now and later, but I just wanted to point that out, you know, necessarily we'll have to discuss it, but.
And of course, right now, a church in town can, can rent the pool for a evening, and I don't think it's addressed whether or not that's what we have policy.
Yeah, we've got actually budgeted, I think, I can't remember the exact amount, I think it was ten a week is what you guys were doing, approximately ten rentals a week. We've got budgeted the same.
Eight a month.
No, I think it's a week, ten rentals a week. Is that correct, have you about how many you did?
Probably, because in the end, it's really usually pretty heavily, whereas in the beginning, there might be four or five rentals a week, and then in the end, every single slot, you should have taken out, for pool parties.
Yes, correct, so we have rentals through the week, just as you do now, and on the weekend, just as you do now. And then, the intent was to keep the schedule the exact same as basically what you did this next, this past year. The, the only thing that I think that we are looking at changing is, instead of swim lessons through the week, having swim less, swim lessons through the week in the morning is looking at doing swim lessons on the week in, or it's Saturday morning, so that the parents that are working during the morning, or have a job that maybe commute to Springfield or Oliver, or here in Buffalo, regardless, can bring their kids on the weekend. So we're gonna do weekend swim lessons, is the addition that we would add. But the program time would be the same. That was through the mayor's directive, is that we, we wouldn't change programming, that we would keep things consistent in our proposal, so.
The other thing is, do you, would you anticipate that the non-Y members, residents of Buffalo that are paying taxes, would question the Y members admission? And I, and I understand it's an incentive even for you to take over and all this, but what's their reaction gonna be?
I, I wouldn't anticipate any. The, the cost of them coming to the pool hasn't changed a penny. The services they get will be the same. I think that we can be very seamless, especially with Kami working for the Y. She understands the operation of that pool, I'm a certified pool and spa operator myself, so I think the quality is gonna be right there from the very get-go. But just because somebody joins the Y does not take them out of the population of the city of Buffalo. The, the same person that walks into the Y's door as a Y M C A member is also a city of Buffalo person. I, I live in the city limits, I'm also a member of the Y.
And they should make the rules into that, right?
Well, I'll make a motion that if the mayor feels comfortable with the contract, with, which is substantially in the form that this is in, that he be authorized to sign it on behalf of the city of Buffalo.
Wayne, we already have a motion on the floor. We have a motion, a second.
Who made that?
Who made?
Um, Christie, you made a motion.
Well, that's right, we're in the discussion here, it's all right.
Is there any further discussion? Right now, I'll call for a.
All right.
Jess.
Yes.
Larry.
Yo.
Wayne.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
James.
Yes. Let me take mine.
No, I don't have to know why.
I think the citizens of Buffalo don't reject this.
Well, that motion passes. Danny Cantrell contract, this is on the Locust Street project. Originally, when we started the project, we assumed that the project would be done. I hoped in about four months, figured it might be five, never anticipated it would be before six months we planned it for. Danny is, is being paid weekly, up to six months on this contract, and yet, the, the project lingers on, and we need to probably go ahead and, and I, I would, would. And we need to probably go ahead and, and I would urge that the board would vote to continue that contract on a week-by-week basis until this project is completed.
Wait.
Yes?
Yeah.
Are the, you know, there was a substantial part of that contract involved the use of forms. And is the use of the forms going to be severely limited over what it was when we were full-blown in the Locust Street project?
What do you mean severely?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of his contract, his payment for the forms. And are we going to be using those forms to the same extent that we were on the Locust Street project?
Yes, we have Danny Skid steer, his forms, his expertise, his know-how, his ability to turn a radius, et cetera, et cetera. It's not just a piece of equipment, it's kind of the entirety of what Danny adds to the project, yes.
You're wanting to renew his contract on a week-to-week basis?
Right.
If we do that, you're taking Mike Cheeks' skid loader out of it. As far as I'm concerned, no question, or that, or I've got, or you've got a no vote right here. So the rest of council can do what they want to, but his skid loader, his twelve-hundred dollars, and it's only, and it's, according to what I understood today, they're ten days away from finish, or should be. Engineer, how far are we away from job? Okay?
I'd love to tell you it's ten days, I don't know. I mean, the weather's gonna do anything until it gets back to temperature, so.
Weeks as a contract, week to week, we pay him when they're not working, I mean.
Good question.
Well, I mean, it's a question.
They can't work for a week because it's negative temperatures, are we going to still have to pay him if we extend a contract, since it's a weekly contract?
And I think the answer would be yes, but we can always modify that. Right now, the guys didn't work today, they didn't work yesterday, they didn't work the day before, but the forms were set up for the state, ready for once it's warming up for concrete.
What if we modified it and broke it down to how much he made per day, if I, I paid him for the days he worked? I just can't see paying a weekly contract if they're not going to be able to work.
Well, I'll defend that a little bit, Christie. Given the fact that the forms are set, they're being used, they can't take them up and take them down.
Right.
So until, until that concrete's set, they're there, you know, so I would, I'd have to go along with paying for the forms.
But they can't use them anywhere else.
They can't, but you're right, so if, I think the forms should be paid on the same basis. If we're going to pay him a day's work, we pay for the forms a day for. If we don't pay him, if they don't work, the forms don't get paid for.
I thought we were renting his equipment, are we paying him wages?
No, and his expertise falls under the contract.
Well, not, no.
That's a different, that, just don't get ahead of yourself, that's for a different thing.
Well, now, wait a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. So what you proposed here?
No, that's for later, that's for later.
That's for, that's for May and June.
Yeah, that's for sidewalks and later on, we're talking about the existing Locust Street project as it is right now.
Well, how much are we paying him?
We're paying him, what, twenty-five-hundred?
Twenty-four ninety-three.
Twenty-four ninety-three a week, is what we're paying him.
Well, what have we got to do, just pour, the forms are laid, we've got to pour that concrete and then do the rest of the asphalt.
I'm guessing we got about, I'm guessing, two to three weeks' work. We've got, we got to go down Prince Street, and we got to complete the intersection there at Locust and Thirty-two. And it's going to take a week to get our bond up and running and get the modoc information to us to move forward there.
Can you ask your, find out about that bond?
That's the next time. The other alternative is we just stop working on it and just say it's done.
Wouldn't he agree to his twenty-five-hundred dollars a week to divide that by seven and be paying that for a day? I mean, that to me would be reasonable.
And if that's what the board votes, that's what we.
I'd go along with paying it.
Daily pro-rata?
Daily pro-rata on a five-day week, and just get this job and hope that we learn a lesson, if we have or not, if we have. And.
We're learning a lot, I guess.
But then on the other thing, if we're going to extend this, then I guess we're going to extend Mike's at eighteen dollars an hour and the other three employees at ten, but I'm still, I still don't want to pay Mike Cheeks' twelve-hundred dollars for a skid loader when he's been using Rogers. I mean, we've got a skid loader for three weeks that he can use, Roger, can he? Well, I mean, it's just, if we can cut twelve-hundred dollars worth of expenses out of this project, we need to cut it. The city money, we need to, we need to tighten this project up and get it done right, unless we get about it. We'd all expect.
There was no time.
Yeah, there was no time.
On Mike's, well, we could just stop Mike's income, we want to. So I, I'll make a motion that we pay it on a pro-rata basis based upon a five-day week, and that Mike Cheeks' skid loader is not to be considered into this new extension of the existing contract.
I agree, when you said you wanted to terminate the contract.
As far as his skid loader's concerned. I mean, unless, let me make that motion.
I don't have the contract to my knowledge.
The method's for real.
Okay. Um, I also need to know, I need a motion to pay Amy for previous two payments.
I guess if we're.
We have a sentence in twenty-eight.
Make the motion.
We have a sentence in twenty-eight. And I don't have any instructions, so I don't know, because he's not brought me here.
I would have a question on between two, with the two motions. We've got to see, first, if we had a contract with Cheeks.
Yeah, there's, there's an agreement with Mike Cheeks. And it is basically effective until completion of the project.
Till what?
Till completion of the Locust Street project. Mike?
Well, that's not, that's not, this is not the question, is that we, that we did a contract.
An open-ended.
An open-ended contract, now that's what I don't.
That's, that's how every contractor construction works.
That's the way it should be, but there's got to be somewhere in the line, you've got to stop the bleeding.
Well, you can, you can terminate it on sixty days' red notice.
Sixty days, well, I understand, but I, I guess.
So we post it.
Yeah, let's post it.
I mean, if, if Mike's willing to terminate it, then you can do whatever you want.
Well.
Yeah, we're not doing it. There's expert back there, I don't think they need his skills, or do they for a living, or, I don't think that, I agree they don't need to do it.
No, because we can, Roger can have his there in thirty minutes.
Right, Danny? Is that, is that a fair statement?
We've been doing cleanup, putting dirt around here and there, but we're good to use it too.
All right, give it a one motion, here, if you have my motion.
Repeat that, yes, it's to pro-rate his first time.
To pro-rate his salary based upon a five-day week. The number of working days, whether he has got to work to be paid.
Define work, though. Does, does he have to be physically out there or having his forms set up on the site?
Yes, he physically, he has to physically work.
Okay.
And that's the forms fitting, because he can sit there, according to this contract, due to the fact that it's open-end, he cannot put the last screw in the bolt until everything's finished.
We want to be fair, I think.
Well, I think it's fair, I think we've been more than fair.
We just need to know what, is there a second?
Jess?
Yes.
Christie, yes, James? Larry?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
A motion passed. Next thing we have, on our agenda, the sewer update, and I talked about that previously during Gus's question-answer session. We're going to have some proposals hopefully at the next meeting about where we want to go with our INI. Locust Street Bond, in order to complete Locust Street project, we'd have to connect the sidewalk to Highway Thirty-two. State of Missouri owns Highway Thirty-two, and they're a little bit finicky when we go in there and start tearing up stuff. So we have to put up a performance bond, and Jess, did I state that correctly? Performance bond as opposed to, I guess, permanent bond?
Yeah, I don't, I still don't agree with the department, the DOT, because it's, it's a permit. It's still a permit, not a performance, because we're not performing anything, they should be just a permit bond.
Well, technically, we are performing work on their right-of-way.
We are, whenever, I go back, when you run a water line on the state, on modoc's property, you get a permit bond, you don't get a performance bond, you get a permit to run down it. Which, the difference, as I said, is several hundreds of dollars in premium. A permit bond is a hundred dollars. When we ran Don Woods's water line from the city to his subdivision, it was a permit, and it cost a hundred dollars a year. This bond is a fifty-thousand-dollar performance bond, and the premium, according to, not me, according to the girls at the office, this premium's twelve-hundred dollars.
Regardless of what it, what it's called.
We have to do it, I mean, it's, it's their, it's their highway, it's their game, we got to do it. They're not right, but we hit an hierarchy with them to get it working. I wanted to go, I told the engineer, I said, I haven't got a problem with this, and he said, what? And I said, I'm going three inches from the highway and just stopping. He said, what? And I said, three inches, I'm not a dancer. He said, you can't, and he said, Roger said you can't do that, and I said, well, how can I? He said, you can, and I said, yeah, I can, for twelve hundred dollars, I guess, but.
I'm in the opinion that we purchase the twelve-hundred-dollar bond to get the paperwork started so our guys can get that done. And that's, I guess, I agree that's within my spending, of course.
Well, if they're giving us a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, we feel like they're giving us fifteen-hundred dollars less.
I can't vote on it, because it's out of the office, and I know that.
Is there a motion to go ahead and pay that out of the transportation fund?
Do we have to have a motion, isn't that part of the Locust Street project? It's already.
I would think that it is part of the.
And it's in, within my discretion, I just want to make sure everything's okay with that, before. All right, we'll go ahead. Debbie, can you make sure that gets that bond purchased tomorrow, and we start doing all the things we need to do now? Are you with me?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next thing on our agenda, we have new business, the sidewalk proposal. When I passed out last week with the Alderman packet, it was a little bit inaccurate, so I've got a new proposal, winter-spring, twenty-fifteen, sidewalk proposal. The things that have changed, the Maple Streets, the concrete was a little high in the previous one because I included the concrete that was paid for in part by the school for their driveways, and I backed out both the school's portion and the city's portion. And the other thing I forgot to add was the fringe for the employees for the new project proposal. And I do have some additional nationwide statistics.
Andrew?
Yes.
Now, where do you, where are you proposing to put these sidewalks?
Well, if Mr. Piper were here, this would kind of be his.
The other thing is that before any sidewalks can be approved, we've got to make sure that there's not a water line under them, and if there is, the water lines are in good shape. I don't want to spend a lot of money on sidewalks and go back in and tear them up again.
Right.
So anything, before we day or nay any of this, I would like to see a proposal of the sidewalk itself, of where it's going to be, and then I want to make sure that those particular pieces properly, that Rogers cleared them, to make sure there is no sewer lines under them or any water lines that will have to be replaced in the near future. I think that's the thing that, if we don't look at that now, we're going to come back here in the next administration or two or three years and say, boy, they screwed it up, they just didn't check to make sure the water lines. We've built streets in this town for years and turn right around within thirty days and tear them up to put sewer lines in.
I understand.
Let's look down the line, let's look at that project, bring those, what those, what you're intending to do to the council, and then the council vote on how we're going to build them, either contract or hire it. But I think that those are the first things we have to do, is where we're going to put it and what it's going to look like.
Let me finish here and kind of explain what this is and why, then we can have a discussion on it, if that's okay with you. All right. Last July, Mr. Coltrane gave me an estimate of what engineering would cost for phase two on the Locust Street project, and the board decided they didn't want to spend seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars for engineering. Jim Piper came to me and said, Andy, that money would be better spent repairing some of the sidewalks we have, like down Locust Street north of town, some of those, those roads that do have old sidewalks in the north-central part of town that are overgrown by grass, crumbled up to where you can't hardly tell if there's a sidewalk there. At that time, Mr. Piper had a list of areas he would like to see fixed. He went out with Mr. Jasper, is that correct?
Yes.
And looked at a number of sidewalks he thought needed to be fixed, and said, Andy, we need to focus on something simple like this that doesn't require engineering, that doesn't require much more than disguised boots on the ground, getting work done. And Mr. Piper and I had met a few weeks ago, discussed how to go about it, strategies to go about it. We met with some of our guys who are working on the Locust Street project, talked with them, what strategy would be, what costs would be. It's my understanding, there was a meeting with Stevie Cox, is that correct? Who did our sidewalks in the past. So I put this proposal together based on what we've done in the past, what, I say my, I say a proposal. If someone has a better proposal, then certainly we need to flush that out and work towards doing something. I have some numbers on nationwide, what I call nationwide statistics, what sidewalks cost as a whole nationwide. And I want to go through it. And I wanna go through it, uh, briefly. Maple and Main Street, uh, in the summer and fall of twenty eleven, uh, the city hired some part-time employees to replace damaged sidewalks on Maple Street. They were able to accomplish one thousand six hundred thirty-one linear foot of sidewalk. I have the, the cost broken down, the concrete, rock, the weight of fringe, and that rock, uh, may be a little bit light, uh, because we use, like I said, we use some of the cities, just in, uh, we use rocks, and we would be light enough. So, uh, that broken down can come out to ten dollars and eighty-one cents a linear foot. Uh, the, the only problem with that project is it was done, it required quite a bit of work, uh, from Roger Jasper's department, and tearing out the old sidewalks to fill them afterwards. Uh, Roger's guys and equipment were there on site, uh, they used quite a bit. The new project wouldn't rely on Roger's department's equipment. They would pay Danny Cantrell twelve hundred dollars per month for equipment and eighteen, eighteen dollars an hour for labor. My chief, uh, eighteen dollars an hour as construction foreman, and we'd have three, uh, employees at ten dollars an hour. Uh, this would be a part-time project, uh, in the winter and spring, uh, performing concrete. The guys figure they may be able to work, uh, maybe three out of five days a week. And they figure in a three-day work week, they can do approximately three hundred foot of sidewalk a week. Uh, broken down the cost for that, and it comes up thirteen dollars forty-two cents a linear foot, uh, for sidewalk. Uh, that's higher than what we've done before, but this estimate doesn't include, uh, or doesn't necessitate any, any initial help from Roger's department, or any major help, uh, from Roger's department. Roger may wanna come out and spot some water lines and sewer lines from time to time, and, uh, we may need an extra guy from time to time, probably, uh, not slightly. Uh, nationwide, uh, there was a sidewalk study, uh, from the Knox County Board of Education in Tennessee from ninety-three, and in ninety-three, they concluded it's about twelve fifty a linear foot. Uh, walkinginfo.org said twenty, let's see, uh, twelve to twenty dollars per linear foot, but that was some old data. Uh, the newer data, uh, Roselle, Illinois, uh, comes out to, and that was, uh, Roselle, Illinois. That was in twenty twelve, come to eighteen seventy-six per linear foot. And I've got another estimate from the city of Lebanon from their, uh, twenty thirteen capital improvement plan, and, uh, they're looking at eighteen dollars thirty-four cents per linear foot, uh, twenty thirteen for Lebanon, so, uh... By the way, we're doing fairly well doing the big house. That's, that's the data I have to provide to the Alderman. Do the Alderman have any questions?
Do you pay for it?
Uh, transportation.
I pay for Greenway out of the transportation fund, too.
Right.
We're talking about maybe buying the state highway, the county shed out of, out of the transportation fund. I don't know, I was sure last week that CBA Desert Brooks said that the workers spent the money within ten years of the road.
And that was our general revenue.
Brooks broke.
Yeah.
I've got a couple, I've got a couple of questions first. The price is what it is. Why do I need two foremen to supervise three people?
Is there, I believe you mean these, these people aren't supervisors, but they're workers?
Well, according to this, you just told me that construction foreman would pay at eighteen dollars, and my chief would work as a construction foreman. What am I paying Danny Cantrell to do?
He, he's the, uh, the, uh, the foreman that does, I've got it ordered in here. In terms of our, the finishing, Danny's the guy who, uh, gets the concrete down and uses it. So we got two different guys doing kind of two different things. We got one guy pulling out existing sidewalks. We got another guy, uh, putting up forms and finishing.
In your proportion, three to four hundred feet?
Uh, three hundred feet a week is what the guys are making.
I talked to Mr. Cantrell, and he told me he'd rather tear them out himself than someone else tearing them out. He said, "He can tell how much to tear out, and, uh, we don't have tall smudges feeling, can do it all," as he told me.
Well, and I think the danger says he and I, you know, Mike, because that's the team that's been working together on the Locust Street project. I mean, this is, this is what Mr. Piper wants done. Don't, don't look at Andrew and say, "Oh, this is Andrew's idea, so it must be bad. Andrew's trying to bankrupt us. Let's, let's shut Andrew down real quick, because Andrew's a horrible human being."
And I wanna make a motion to the table, just until Mr. Piper's here, and who wins.
And I don't have a problem with that. And I think Mr. Piper would wanna be here as well, uh, so...
One thing, Andrew, that some of the folks may not realize, that in the last two or three days, the city got a, not only we get our grant, but the school got a grant for two hundred and two thousand dollars. I looked on their website, and apparently they're gonna build sidewalks walks all along the west, east side of the high school, do a ton of sidewalks over the middle to go, and fill in the ditch on Main Street. And I don't know whether they're just going to the property line on Main or, or where. I couldn't tell, but apparently they're gonna build...
They're doing phase two of the Locust Street project for us, so...
Yeah, yeah, they really are.
We, we've won the lottery here. But, but the, the, the point is with, 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 uh, the sidewalks, and, and the spirit of what Mr. Piper wants to do is something that's high-impact, low-cost, that we can get in there and do ourselves. And, uh, do I think it's a good idea? Sure. Uh, Mr. Piper came to me and asked me to put a proposal together, put some numbers together, and I've worked with him to do that. Now, I'm the devil who made this piece of paper. I am the horrible person who put an idea out there. If anyone else has a horrible idea or wants to do a little legwork and come up with something awful to benefit our city, I am for them. Please do, please do. And that's all we have, uh, for new business. Oh, wait, no, we have proposed changes to the liquor laws. Uh, we, currently, right now, our liquor laws, uh, allow for, I guess, one, permit for, uh, hard, uh, buy the glass hard liquor sales. And, uh, folks from Eastside Tavern, uh, came to me and asked, uh, how come we can't have a permit to sell a few glasses of Scotch, Mr. Mead? And I said, "Not at all. Look into that." Uh, recently, we had a winery, uh, come, uh, to, to look at building a business in Buffalo. Is that correct, Debbie? You know a little bit more about it than I do.
At that, at this point, they're still looking at land, so that's about all I know. They haven't given a lot of deals.
And, uh, they wanna do, I guess, buy the glass sales, uh, stuff like, so, so that's something, uh, I want to, uh, bring it to the Alderman's attention. Down the road, we might consider looking at our liquor laws and, and...
Wasn't the original liquor law passed because, and Wayne, no, he's prosecutor. Whenever the Maple Street, they had to sell so many dollars' worth of food to sell liquor?
That's state law, though.
But we have, we have to buy the state law with our, with liquor licenses.
They, they have a different license. They do have to sell ninety percent of restaurant things. They fall under a different type of license, and Bex is the only place in town that can sell hard liquor and only...
That's what I'm saying.
Not restaurant, because it's one per every twenty-five hundred residents in town. We only have three thousand and eighty-four, so we only have one of those licenses available.
Yeah.
The liquor, the liquor license that Eastside Tavern has is fourteen percent alcohol or less, and it's, uh, one per every twelve hundred and fifty. So there's two of those licenses available, which I talked to the wine people today. If they do come, they will fall under that. We'll just do that, like a wine tasting, maybe, wine tasting.
Any other question? All right, and the last thing, uh, we have related for open meeting and citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Yes, sir. Yes, you are, Paul.
I have a couple of questions. On the Greenway, you've got three hundred thousand dollars grant?
The, the project cost is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And, uh, of course, it's, it's a mashing grant. They're not gonna pay all of it, but we've been approved up to, uh, three hundred thousand dollars.
So the city would pay seventy-five, do you reckon?
Seventy-five thousand dollars and, and the state would pay three hundred. And it's not, uh, uh, what, what people close their eyes and envision a grant where Uncle Sam writes us a check and, and, uh, one of those big oversized checks, Paul, where you come in and hold it up. Uh, we, we have to, uh, and I would assume the Board of Alderman would approve three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the transportation fund, uh, to be, uh, committed to this project, and then we submit receipts in the ordinary courts of the paper. And then the, 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 the state reimburses us for our costs up to three hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct? Did, did I state that appropriately?
You will submit, uh, application, and of that application, the state will reimburse twenty percent. So the expenses up to the point of that submittal will be on there. The state will reimburse you at eighty percent of that total. The twenty percent that don't reimburse is your twenty, twenty percent of the project.
Okay.
Then on your sidewalk proposal?
Mm-hmm.
You said that would go out of transportation fund?
Yes.
Okay, so what are the, that would come out of the...
It, it certainly could. Yeah, it, it could be funded out of that as well. Yeah, we, we've got different options. My, my thought of, of, of the, uh, the proposal, something we could fund for, for three months, uh, and I, I've got, uh, weekly cost, uh, written up, and I, I hadn't calculated it. But, um, uh, from what I remember guessing, uh, the board could possibly approve maybe thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's gonna give us, uh, a couple months of, of guys working just to shore up deficiencies, uh, kinda like what we did on, uh, on, uh, Maple Street and what we did on Main Street. It's instead of a, a, a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar Locust Street project, we have a thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, high-impact, uh, thing in northern neighborhoods. Yes, ma'am?
I'm trying to understand. There's, is there, is there four hundred thousand dollars in the transportation fund?
Four hundred and eighty, almost four hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Okay, and then you're taking three seventy-five to pay for this project that you're gonna get the money back for a grant. Where are you getting the money to do all this other stuff we're talking about? Because it sounds like most of the money's gonna be gone or at least tied up in the grant money. Until the grant, you know, and are you, are you, are you spending the money that's gonna get paid back from the grant money?
And, and I don't quite understand the question. The, the, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand that the board hypothetically approved, uh, probably wouldn't start getting spent until when?
You'll have, uh, monthly reimbursements to go to construction. When you go to construction, you'll have weekly submittals?
But we're, we're not gonna go to constru-, we're, we're probably not going to start spending money realistically on this project till when?
No time of year we're gonna have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars committed.
Okay.
During any of it.
When, when do you think we would first start spending money on, on this project?
You'll start spending money in about two months.
In about two months, okay. When, when will we start spending significant amounts of money?
In, depending on the review process, somewhere in, uh, eight months to a year.
Okay. Uh, in the next year, uh, the transportation fund's gonna bring in approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of money.
Well, that's gotta be prevailing wage, right, on that?
Yes.
Gee, everything is. Now, this all hinges is on land procurement, right?
Um, if, if you wanna go all the way to the park, yes.
Well, if we just wanna go to Mill Street, we have to think...
You've gotta get across those, and I believe they've already been talked to.
Right, but from Mill Street south, we have to secure the land procurement.
Right, right.
North is, where does this, where did this intend to start?
It starts at Main Street.
At Main Street, there at the restaurant.
Connects to the sidewalk at Main Street.
And that land was promised at one time it would have to be secured. Then we have to go down through, across Hickory, and go across Mill Street, and that's the main expense. Is there, if we do not procure the land as a gift and it has to be purchased, it could at that time forestall the entire project.
Well, if, if you purchase the land, it's gonna reduce the length of trail that you're gonna go down.
Right, because we don't know how much the land will even cost. And we cannot con, we cannot condemn the land, right?
You could, but that's, you have to block that condition.
So we have to look at down the future at a time, and we need to know if we can go all the way or for this company is...
Right.
But if we just go to Mill Street with what we've applied for, is that grant still approval? Or did we ask to go to an extension beyond that?
I think it's approval. We'll have to see what the property owners do, as far as the grant...
If we can only go to Mill Street, and that's as far as we can go, because we can't procure the land, but we can do the job from Main Street to Mill. It's the, the grant was written up, so it didn't have a link.
Now, its length is based on how much budget you have for it.
So does that mean that you can have a sidewalk from Main Street to Mill, you know, not to the, not from there, not to the car?
Yeah, that, that, I understand.
So it doesn't say you can have sidewalks from there, and then...
We are hoping that they would give us the land and take us all the way to the school property, so... But we have to procure that land. We're hoping as a grant, we have to procure, how do we go?
So do we have a timeline, that if, I mean, it talks about reasonable progress policy. Uh, if we get stalled for something, are we going to have to forfeit the money because we can't continue with the project?
Pardon me?
In this grant, it talks about a reasonable progress policy.
Right.
If we get stalled for some reason, is, is there the possibility that we have to forfeit the grant money?
If you don't complete the project, sure, you can forfeit the grant. You know, the grant is based on you moving forward with the project. If you don't move forward with the project, they'll take the money and give it to somebody else.
We can afford all the way to Mill Street.
Yeah, if you can, right.
Depending on that cost.
Because it says if a, if a project falls three months behind schedule at any point in its development without a written explanation provided, I mean, is, is that something we should be afraid of if we don't have permission from landowners?
No, it's something that you have to start working on.
Now, before we get started?
No, now, it's, you, you don't wanna wait till...
When do we, is there a deadline when we have to get started on this?
Is there what?
Is, is there a, a deadline? Like, do we have to get started at a certain time?
On...
Do we have to start where...
Talking to the property owners?
Just, yes.
Talking to the property owners, I would suggest you start talking to them as soon as possible. There is no deadline to start talking to them.
Like an expiration date to say, "Okay, you've taken too long. The grant money's gonna be sent somewhere else."
If you dally around for two years, you're not gonna have the grant money.
You need to see this, how wide is this proposal, what's the width?
Twelve foot.
The width of the, uh, of the trail, of the, of the land we're wanting to build on? Are we taking both sides?
The easement or the width of the trail?
The easement.
The easement would vary depending on the terrain, but most places it'd be twenty foot wide.
So, I mean, we're taking really basically one side of the creek?
Yeah, it, it can be as small as twelve feet, but you have a temporary construction easement because you can't work in twelve feet. So, depending on what the property owners wanna do, we can write the easement for any, whichever one they want.
And do we have to have a, is, does our trail have to have a fence or anything? And if the trail has to be open to the public for twenty-five... And it, the trail has to be open to the public for twenty-five years? Okay, so that, that just means the, the easement through people's property?
Just like, what you get is you get perpetual easement, easement's there for, just like you do in the walkways.
We may have to build something.
You may have to, depending on where you go on the trail.
And that, that land all flood plain down there through there?
Most of it is.
They're going to keep most of it.
It's what we do everywhere.
Would that infringe on property owner rights?
No, they're giving it to us, well, limited ones. We ask you to give it to us, and you give it to us, we have infringed on your rights, have we?
I don't know, I talked to people in Alabama.
We're not in Alabama, but over, but over there.
I understand that.
And I'm getting, I've offered to give more than anybody, as much as anybody else has for land. So, and I don't feel like they're infringing on my benefit, on my rights.
Maybe you don't know all the legal areas.
No, maybe I really don't care about it.
Jess, is that the reason that you want the property that's, that county shed?
Well, two reasons, this, I mean, this, this county shed deal is, is kind of my deal, because I think that the city could use it. We, we need the plate, the city needs it to store gravel, rock, and equipment. We're, we have to take rock, Roger has to park, park rock under, at the police department. It would, and there's buildings already there, it would be, if it can be worth, we, the city can really utilize the building, and it shouldn't cost us that much money. On the other hand, that's another reason, too, because the fact that we will, that'll be a piece that we can utilize in the walkway. We have to think about parking for people that want to use it, that'd make a great parking lot for people that would want to use half of the walkway. But that's the reason I would like to secure the, the county's shed, because we've got, we can use it for a lot of things. And for what we'd like to have for the road department. I mean, if, if somebody else buys it, then we're going to have to deal with them to get an easement through there, unless the county will give us an easement prior to selling that piece of property. If we can't buy it, then we need to procure an easement from the county to put that through there as soon as possible. Of course, we praise it now, it's supposed to praise it this week, they're supposed to praise it and let us know, but I mean, that can be a bottleneck, that's, that could be, once we get that piece, the old roller, the old roller property is next, and then roller's property, and then the city owns everything else to my property, and the intent is to turn around at the school property line. Is that right, Jim?
This, this will just get you to the park, parking lot this time, Jess, without my money?
Okay, so I don't get to give you any money?
No, not this time. Well, you go ahead and give it, though.
We'll take it, we'll practice.
You can go ahead and give it.
An extra.
But, oh, you're only going to the parking lot?
At the park.
Oh, okay, I, I misunderstood, that's all right.
We don't have any, we don't have any place to store stuff at this time without that?
It's kind of like the, the closets in your house, you never have enough room.
Oh, Lord, don't even talk about closets in my house.
So, I mean, that's the reason, we, it would be nice for us to use, buildings are in good shape, Roger can use the shop, we can maintain a lot better equipment, I'm just hoping the city can buy it and utilize it, we can utilize it. Be cheaper than trying to build one or buy it.
Plus, Roger's got all those lots of pike and stuff out here setting out room, you have the airport, and you get all that.
We need the storage, we're just, we're on storage space.
Would that be transportation funds buying that, since it is for the...
You know, I don't know, we haven't really gone that far. We, the thing that we've just waited on, or I've asked Andy to wait on, we need to see what it's going to cost. And then we have to determine the usability of it, if we can afford to buy it at that time. I mean, it may be a situation after the county comes to us, that Andy and, and, I mean, the mayor and the council says, you know, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, but we can't afford it, it's too high, we'll just have to pass it.
Seems like we need that more than we need some sidewalks.
Oh, no, we always need sidewalks.
Well...
We either need sidewalks or...
Over in my end of town, people get out in the street, they have a sidewalk.
People in wheelchairs, it's a lot easier to put people in wheelchairs on new sidewalks than it is on that one.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, back to the, to the grant and all, how many homes or private properties are there that will have to be, you know, what do you, I don't know how you go about doing that, do you have to knock on their door and say, hey, we're thinking about building a sidewalk here, do we have this property?
We, we've already touched base with him and preliminarily got some very good...
Very good.
But, uh, one guy was a little concerned whether or not we, we put it, like, it's one route versus another route, but he's very much open to the idea. And the property owners understand that this is, the, you know, it's not like the city's trying to come in and snatch their, their land, this is, this is property that they can't develop, because it is in a flat lane. And, and this project would also enhance the value of their properties, so it's kind of a win-win situation for everyone.
So would it, would it, is it like a sidewalk that's going to go, like, kind of in front of their house the way it is, or on Maple Street?
No, the, the goal would be that the, that the trail would follow the creek path.
Houses on the creek.
And, and part of the project is also, it's not, it's not just a green space plan, it encompasses a number of municipal goals. One of the things that it's going to do is to take care of the intersection of, of Mill and, and Hickory Street. That's an intersection that floods quite often. If, if you'll drive, you'll notice that there's this concrete thrown into, into the ditch line, and that's to keep the road from washing. So this project is, is going to do a number of things, it's going to enhance the waterway from the central part of the city north. That's inherently going to help water flow from the southern, drainage from the southern part of our city. So there, there are a number of benefits from this one project.
And my second question is, is who would own that waterway or greenway? Would the city still own it, or would the state own it?
The, the city would have a permit, but the state wouldn't, wouldn't have that present interest. But for, but for, I guess, the, the rights to monitor it, that, that P and R, and, and I guess the, the Army Corps of Engineers has, saying what we do, what we do.
Yes, I'm saying, like, for the, for the landowners, would they, would the, like, the EPA and stuff like that be able to tell the landowners what they can and cannot do on their own property that might affect that greenway? Does that make sense?
The EPA, EPA has always got that right, Kevin, to tell you what you can and can't do with your land, regardless of what's next to it.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Real quick, I, I know we talked a little bit about the Y, certainly don't want to beat a dead horse, the proposal that the Y submitted, we, we hope that, we're very excited, and we anticipate this really benefiting the Y, but we also want this to benefit the city. And I know that sounds crazy, when you, when you put together a, a guy, you want to benefit yourself, but, and I mean this wholeheartedly, if you don't feel like this benefits the city of Buffalo, please, keep the pool, run the pool, we're happy for the city of Buffalo, we, we want everybody to succeed. When the city of Buffalo succeeds, we succeed. So it, it's kind of one of those things that when you're a local business and you're a resident, you just want everything to succeed. So please look at the budget and try and decide where you guys are at, and if you don't feel like this is a worthwhile project, Larry, I don't want you upset, and Wayne, I don't want you upset, and I don't want you upset at the Y or anything else, please feel like we're, we're in a good place by doing this. And if you don't, let, let's back up, and when the time is right, if there is a time, we can move forward again, but I certainly don't want to feel like the Y's coming in here and we're, that, that's not what we're trying to do at all. We, we think we could benefit, we hope that we could do that for the city. If we don't, then we want to step back and do what's right here, not be pushing.
Are you guys still working on, I guess, a proposal to take over softball and...
Yeah, yeah, I've got that, Debbie sent that to me, I've not started working on that, we just finished up our budget here, and now, and I was hoping to wrap up, you know, pool stuff before I got into that, so I know what kind of direction to head to that, that's what it sounds like right now.
Okay.
Is to do that, so, yes.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other public comments? I see none, that's all we have for the open portion of our meeting. We can have it on our agenda to go into closing of the...